It's 5:59ish, good evening everyone. Welcome to Town of the Paw council meeting for April the -- what is today?
March 29th.
March 29th, it's not April, oh boy, time flies. Okay. So, good evening, we have three hearings we're going to be conducting this evening. The first one is the introduction of our financial plan for 2016. This council has worked very hard to get the numbers where they needed to be and we're very pleased with the outcome. And so, having said that, I'll just turn things over to Jody Madden, who is our Chief Financial Officer. Jody?
Great, I'm very happy for everybody attending this. I'm sure you said "why are you here?" So, essentially, there are some handouts here if anybody was interested in following along. The objective of this is just to kind of go on an overview of the assessments and how they relate to your property taxes and to provide you with an opportunity here with the plans are in store for 2016. If you have any further questions in regards to this presentation whatsoever, just feel free to contact me. My contact information is in the information provided. So, our financial plan consists of our annual estimates for 2016, the 2017 proposed estimates, and our capital estimates for 2016 as well, and the five-year capital fund expenditure program. So, 2016 was an assessment year for everybody. People may have seen their taxes fluctuate, go down or go up by, I think, as much as 35 percent. Some people's assessment values went up, some people's assessment values went down. So, these assessments are used to determine the annual tax rate or the mill rate, along with the revenue requirement for our municipality. Council was committed to maintaining the same revenue requirement as previous years, so both 2014 and 2015, we maintain the same revenues. Through operational efficiencies, this requirement has decreased by $77,000 in 2016. So, if your residential property assessment has increased more than 19 percent from previous assessment years, your tax bill property -- or your property tax bill may rise. So, for -- if there want in more detail, you can see the page entitled "2016 Property Assessment" included with this presentation. So, the transfer from surplus funds is the same in 2015 as it was in -- as it is in 2016. It's $300,000 from our surplus funds. Commitment from council was to once again maintain the same revenue requirement as 2014 and 2015 for operations through revenue generation and cost containment. This plan maintains the same current service levels. It maintains contributions to reserve funds. We did have contract settlements that resulted in approximately $185,000 worth of additional expenses. And this plan also invests in maintenance and extension of infrastructure assets. So, Kelsey School Division does represent 28 percent of your property tax bill. And Kelsey School Division budget has increased, however, the revenue that's required from the Town of the Paw ratepayers has gone down slightly, and it's due to the increase in the assessments in the RM of Kelsey. So, if the assessment value of your home increased more than 20 percent, you'll see an increase in the tax levy for the Kelsey School Division. And once again, any more information in regards to the education amount can be found in here by contacting Kelsey School Division at the contact information. So, police services represent 16 percent of your property tax bill. They have increased by 1 percent from the prior year due to contract settlements. General Government is approximately 11 percent of the budget. There has been reduction of 25 percent from the 2015 budget, sorry, 24 percent. The budget reductions are based on reallocation of staff to the fire department, a staff review, and departmental efficiencies. As well, grants provided to external organizations, it represents 2 percent of your budget. There has been a decrease of 25 percent from previous years in this of grants. The grants previously funded by reserves will now be funded through taxation. They represent approximately $13,000. In addition, the CDC grant in the amount of $92,000 will no longer be funded by taxation. This will be funded using the Community Enhancement Reserve. So, that's why the decrease has been at 25 percent. Garbage and waste represents 3 percent of your property tax bill, and there has been an increase of 1 percent from prior year, based once again to the contract settlements. Recreation and Cultural Services, which is KRC Wellness Center, Sam Weller Museum, and the Public Library, is 9 percent of your property tax bill. There has been once again reallocations of grant funding between KRC and Wellness Center. The budget has reduced by 6 percent due to staffing initiative and operational efficiencies. The fire department is 3 percent of the 2016 budget or the 2016 tax bill. It's increased 22 percent due to the reallocation of the staff member from -- staff and budget from general government to the fire department. The department consists of the fire chief, deputy fire chief, public safety officer, and approximately 25 volunteers. Public Works, we see 10 percent of our property tax bill being spent on public works, and once again, there is an increase of approximately 5 percent due to the contract settlement. The airport will represent 5 percent of the property tax bill. There is an increase of 8 percent due to contract requirements. In addition to a part-time clerical position has also been added out at the airport. Debenchers remain the same for 2016. They'll continue to remain the same until they start getting paid off. The Wood Acres II is the first one, and that will be in 2019. And at that point, the debenture amounts will be going down. Capital reserves, and that's the contributions that we make from our operating budget to fund specific replacement or renewal of capital assets. That represents approximately 10 percent of the property tax bill. And there's actually more detail found within this presentation here, so. For capital reserve withdrawals 2016, we are looking at approximately $1.7 million worth of infrastructure and capital improvements. Some of them, just to highlight, is crosswalk lights at Six and Smith, new sweeper sidewalk plow. However, that was approved in the 2015 financial plan. It didn't arrive on site until 2016, so the carryover funds for that. A detailed list can be found, once again, in the financial plan information. So, essentially, all of this in a nutshell, what it means is, excuse me, a residential rate, if you assume a 17 percent increase in your assessment value from previous years, you're looking at approximately a $164 reduction in your property taxes for 2016. If your assessment increase is higher than the 17 percent, you're probably going to be looking at an increase in your property taxes. If it's lower, then it'll be a further decrease. As well with commercial, it's roughly sitting around that 17 percent as well. If your assessment went up 17 percent or more, you're going to be looking at an increase in taxes. If it went down, you're going to be looking at about a $50 decrease. And that's all I have, so.
Thank you, Jody.
All righty.
So, as with any public hearing, we then open the floor. If anybody would like to come forward and ask a question of us, then please do. All right. Well, that's straightforward. Thank you very much, Jody.
All righty.
I will then close that portion of the hearing. All right, we'll move on to our second hearing of the evening, 2.2 on the agenda. This is a -- sorry, I opened up the wrong file. This is a hearing to vary the established requirements to legalize existing shed that is now being used as a garage. It is located at 365 Bignell Avenue. We need to, if we're going to go forward with this, we need to allow the rear yard requirement to be changed from 10 feet to 5 feet. Is there anyone who would like to either speak for or against this request? Have a seat, sir. Please state your name and street address.
Burns Anderson from 362 City Avenue. Good evening, Mayor and councillors.
Good evening.
I have an objection to this variance. This variance directly affects my property. The location of this said garage is right across the lane from my garage. I don't know how many of the councillors are familiar with it. I can give you a picture of the area passing around. I know Jim visited the site this morning and had a look for himself. Currently, the resident is using this shed as a garage, and he can't access this garage without intruding on my property. I don't think this is correct. If there's damage done to my property, who's responsible? The original building permit for this structure was as a shed. It was then converted to a garage against the town bylaw. I think allowing a garage to exist within 5 feet of the laneway and directly affecting someone else's property isn't correct, okay? Not only issues pertaining to the existing neighbor, but if he sells the property down the road, new neighbors move in and you've got the same issues that continue. Myself and this neighbor have been at odds for the last three or four years since I built my garage. It's been an ongoing issue. We've had the RCMP on-site at least four times. We've had the previous bylaw enforcement officer, Tracy Bannon, visited the location at least three times. The current public safety officer has been on-site at least four times. The dispute is ridiculous. I've tried to talk to the neighbor about the problem. He doesn't want to talk to me. Randy Manich tried to negotiate a settlement last year, came to me, asked me to step forward and be the good neighbor, extend the olive branch. I did. I backed down. The settlement lasted about a week, and the issues are back, okay?
Burns, what was the agreement or the settlement that you guys had?
Well, the problem is, since I built my garage, the neighbor has relocated the position he parks his vehicle in. And he parks it at the very end of his garage, extending out into the laneway. When it extends into the laneway, it obstructs my access to my garage, okay? When he has visitors come over and park, they park behind his vehicles in the laneway. Again, we can't move our vehicles. We go ask them to move, they tell us to move when they're ready. It's an ongoing problem.
No, but you said you guys had reached some sort of agreement in a settlement.
Yeah, Randy had talked to the neighbor, and he had agreed to pull his vehicles further into his driveway. He does have another 15 feet of driveway in front of his vehicles that sits empty. He is within his rights to park where he feels like it, you know? He's within his rights to park as long as he's not encroaching on the laneway.
Your agreement isn't written anywhere, though, is it?
No.
It's kind of a handshake deal.
It's strictly verbal. Randy came and talked to me, he went across the lane, talked to the neighbor, came back and talked to me and said, "It's resolved, he's going to move his vehicles forward." And I agreed to not park my vehicles at the edge of my property, which was obstructing his access. So, we agreed. I pulled back. A week later, the vehicles are back out in the lane, okay? I've lived in that house now for 10 years. I got along with the neighbor for seven years. During those seven years, his vehicles were always parked at the other end of his driveway. It's only after our dispute started that the vehicles moved forward, so. So, I think I've voiced my concerns.
It does make it quite impossible for him to use his garage without encroaching on your property, though. It seems like it's almost impossible to make that turn.
It is impossible. It is impossible, yes. You can't physically get a vehicle in line with that garage without backing onto my property, so.
In your stand on this, I take it as if, you know, you don't want to share your property with him, do you? You're like, for him backing out onto your property, you'd rather that not be?
Well, I don't have a problem with that if he agrees to move his vehicles out of the way, but we've tried that in the past. And I think rewarding him with a variance, you know, when he knowingly built a shed, when he applied to build a shed, and his full intention was to cut the wall open and put a door in and make it a garage.
That's my question, I guess, is that if he was issued a building permit to build a shed and then built a shed and put a door in it and everything else, and then went about at some other time, I don't know how much later, carved out a big entry and put in a garage door, changing obviously from a shed to a garage, when did that happen?
Well, it happened before I moved in.
Oh.
Into the neighborhood, okay? He had told me when it happened, but that's, you know, I'm not going to repeat that, that's hearsay.
Yeah.
You know? Again, I think allowing someone, you know, to perform like this opens the doors for every resident in the town to build a shed where they feel like, get approval for it, cut an opening in it, turn it into a garage, and tough luck, you are, you're stuck with it. And you're stuck with it down the road when that property sells to another owner who buys it with a garage.
Any questions from council?
I have a question for administration. We've, do we not see a variation? Do we see a variation for yourself?
We saw a variation with my garage, yes. When the contractor placed my pad, it was placed 3 feet too close to the lane.
Right.
So, it's only back 12 feet, not the 15 required.
Right.
Okay. And it was a mistake. I applied for a variance. We got it. Now, my garage doesn't obstruct anybody else's access to their property.
Right.
It's 12 feet back, it's not in the way of the laneway.
Your variation doesn't impact any other property owners?
None at all, no. You know, for my garage to be in someone's way, they would have to drive, you know, 10 feet onto my property.
Is that what you see as a public safety officer?
That's what I was just going to add. Is that, what is your take on it?
Honestly, the biggest problem is tuning in with the county of home. Whether the building's a garage or not is an issue with.
That's an accessory building that's built too close even by his previous request in 1988. It doesn't fulfill what the intention was, therefore, it's now an issue by him adding the brick. So, really, this variation is almost twofold. One for replacement of garage, one for replacement of the structure itself because it never followed the zoning requirements as requested in that respect in 1988.
Okay. So, but if I look at the picture, I took a picture this morning, if I look at it, clearly it's a garage and not a shed. And he got a building permit for a shed, not a garage. And now that he's got a garage, now he wants, now he wants a variance. Is Mr. Lime here? No, okay.
Sorry, does he park his vehicles? He parks his vehicles in there?
Yes.
He didn't receive letters backing December 2008 to request him to stop. The variation he went through, and he stopped even as much as what?
It's, sounds like you're not going to be sharing a barbecue this summer.
Probably not, no. This should go much deeper with this neighbor, whether you want to get into that or not, you know? I don't think it's relevant to this.
Yeah.
You know, I have, like I said, on two separate occasions, I have tried to make peace, to talk, and I've been met with a closed door and told to get off his property.
Any other comments or questions from council? Anybody else have a thought or an opinion on this?
Yeah, nobody should have to share their driveway with anybody. It's your property, why should you have to share it? You're the one paying the taxes, not them. That's ridiculous, when you're along the neighborhood.
If there's no other comments, then we'll close this section of the hearing. We are going to bring it forward at council meeting immediately following this public hearing.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Next public hearing is an application from Swampy Cree Holdings Limited to permit a receiving home in a single-family residential zone located at 157 Bell Avenue. All right, so, just to recap my comments earlier, if we can, sorry?
I was thinking we should start with the presentation for the application.
Yeah. So, we'll, just a moment, please. We will, we'll try, we're going to keep this to 15 minutes. We're not going to try to. We are going to keep it to 15 minutes per speaker, and we'd like you to keep it on subject. If we think that it's maybe falling off, then we'll let you know that. And I think, first of all, if we can, I know Dawn is just out there in the hallway, perhaps we would get those that are for the application to speak first, if you would, so, just if you would, come and state your name for the record. And Mr., could someone just get there, Dawn? Come on in, Dawn, have a seat. So, you were out in the hallway, Dawn, I'm sorry. What we've asked is that those who have comments for and against the zoning application to be able to be heard at this public hearing, and we thought we would go, first of all, to those that are for, and that is, of course, yourselves. So, I'll let you, I'll let you speak now. I'll turn my timer on, too.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Alan Monroe. I'm the Manager of Finance for Swampy Cree Holdings. And to my left is Mr. Don Lathlin. He's the Executive Director of Swampy Cree Tribal Council. Excuse me. Earlier this year, we made an application to the town to purchase the property, as we mentioned earlier, where we would build a receiving home. In doing that, we went through a process of site selections, which included this address of Bell Avenue. A number of sites that we looked at were, of course, on OCN, as well as a property owned by Wasquey CP First Nation. One of the sites that we looked at was for OCN, namely was the CN Rail property, but unfortunately, that's tied up with specific claims, so that would take a while to resolve. Of course, other sites that we looked at were the Winton Manor, and then we came up with the current site that we're looking at with 153 Bell. What this receiving home looks at is accommodating those that are here for medical appointments by building a single-story facility consisting of 15 rooms and having a total of 40 beds. Dawn, if you can add some more narrative to that?
Well, each room will include a full washroom, you know, and all the television and other The source of revenue to support the receiving homes operating in debt servicing costs is the, of course, First, FNEB, which is First Nation and New and Health Brands through a public works and government services comprehensive contract, which is the same thing that we do at our Winnipeg receiving home. The target market for a new facility is the tribal councils affiliated First Nations citizens that are scheduled for medical appointments in town here. Of the seven, seven of the eight First Nations Tribal Council affiliated First Nations, there are approximately 12,000 citizens, 50 percent of which are over age 50. As I said, currently, we operate a 40-bed facility on 415 River Avenue in the city of Winnipeg. Much is what the same is going to be done here within the property that we were speaking The facility in Winnipeg was purchased in 1999 and has operated as a nonprofit organization with a balanced budget over the 12-month period, over a 12-year period, I should say. And we draw from this business model, the one in Winnipeg, that is proposed for the town here. Like Alan said, the estimate is to build a 17,000-square-foot facility to approximately, that will be approximately $4.5 million to $5 million. This cost includes all related site preparation and infrastructure, design, construction, project management, furnishings for the facility. Tribal council will use its business plan to secure financing from public and private sources. The private sources include banking institutions, private investors interested in financing First Nations government business projects and services. And as mentioned, FNEB and Aboriginal Affairs and Order Development Canada will be included in there.
Thank you, Dawn. In summary, we're at the stage now, we did provide a deposit for the purchase. The assessed value was $158,000, so we did put down a deposit, and now we're at a stage where the application will be for council to approve, the conditionally used application has been submitted as well. So, that's where we're at today.
Good.
And our plan.
So, want to add anything else at this time?
We could, we could go into the, Mr. Mayor and Council, we could go into the, you know, the benefits that could be derived from this facility, not only for Swampy Cree, but the Town of the Paw residents and the region. And the kind of benefits, what I mean is business being drawn in.
Excuse me.
Like, in the form of contracts related to the construction of the building and long-term employment opportunities. The receiving home will employ 14 full-time and five part-time employees. And when I say construction, there have been a lot of comments made where we're going to be contracting this out from the, like, God knows where, but I think we have everything within the Town of the Paw and surrounding area for this facility to be constructed and built by local people and local expertise, local workforce, local labor, local talent, To that, to that end, you know, there would be construction workers needed, electricians, carpenters, plumbing and heating people, even landscapers. And the suppliers, where are they going to come from? From the area, the Town of the Paw. OCN will provide some also, but we don't have any home hardware across the river or timber marts. We don't have the full complement of carpenters, electricians, plumbers. So, where does that come from? Locally. If not from the town or OCN itself, we also have the LGD. So, this is part of my comments for tonight, but I truly think it is a win-win situation for the region, for the Town of the Paw, OCN, LGD, and the surrounding communities. And there will be offshoots in other ways to make this facility work for both Swampy Cree and the Town of the Paw. Like I said, Like I said, I don't have a Home Hardware.
Okay. Thank you, Dawn. Thank you, Adam.
I have a question, Dawn. You mentioned fourteen full-time positions and five part-time positions. That's a lot of positions for a fairly small facility. Does that mean that it will have people on staff, present at the building at all times? Is that how it operates, or those?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four, so you have somebody on-site twenty-four hours in the building, helping to manage?
There'll be a shift.
Yeah, okay. Good.
Not to mention the transportation, you know, locally.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else would like to speak in favor? All right, then we'll move over to those that perhaps would be opposed. Just wait for you guys to...
Thank you.
Yep? I'm sorry.
I just want to speak in favor on behalf of my parents.
Sure. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
This is for my parents, Keith and Bev Chartrand. They live at 79 Holm Street. They've been there for over thirty years. And my mom said, like, because they've been in a bad car accident, they're home all the time. And they believe that SCTC would bring, like, we have family, and my kids are from West Way CP. When our family comes down for medical, they stay with us and that. It would be nice to have, instead of piles of dirt or piles of snow there, and my kids walk through there to go to the bus stop. So it'd be nice, at one time, there was a walking path towards there so that the kids can walk to school. Now, the Town of the Paw just keeps putting their dirt. If they're putting, like, sewer lines and stuff or fixing anything, they tend to use it as like a pit sort of, you know? And my mom thinks that it would be nice to see something and to help other First Nations or even anybody in need. And that's on behalf of Keith and Bev Chartrand at 79 Holm Street.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, those opposed, and again, I'd like you to state your name and your physical Nobody is...
I'm over.
Okay.
Do we have, can we get some sort of a speakers list or some idea how many wish to speak, rather than?
Well, I want everybody to have an opportunity to ask to speak to speak, unless we're just going to be repetitive.
Just to show them, and...
How many people would like to speak? Cheryl gets to go first.
Cheryl Antonio, 132 Bell Avenue. Twelve years ago, I lived in a high-traffic residential area and thought, in the best interests of my children, to purchase a home in a less busy neighborhood. I wanted to live in a quiet part of town surrounded by neighbors I know by name and where my kids could play safely. My family chose Bell Avenue specifically for those reasons. Fingerville, as it was once known, is a relatively slow-moving place where the children enjoy a small playground, a community bus stop, homemade boat races down the street in the spring, baseball games during the summer, and winter evening sports such as street hockey and man tracker. It is truly a family-oriented residential area. I did not buy my house in an area zone for anything other than homes. I do not want to live across the street from a receiving home, nor do I want one in my neighborhood. I am against the rezoning request. Thank you.
Anybody have anything to... Okay. Next.
My name is Carol Brinker. My husband Darnell and I live at 252 Bell Avenue.
I'm sorry? What was the address?
Pardon me?
What was the address? Sorry?
252. Yep. I'm writing this letter out of frustration and anger with the sale of the future development of the hydro lot located on Bell Avenue. This is just kind of a reiteration of the letter that I previously sent. In 2010, we bought our property on Bell Avenue for the sole purpose of raising a family. We believed that this was the quietest and safest area of the Paw. You can imagine our shock when we found out recently on the radio that the Swampy Cree Tribal Council had purchased the empty lot located down our street and that a receiving home would be built just five doors down from our home. We had no notice from the town whatsoever. We think, just first of all, that the receiving home is a wonderful idea. It's greatly needed for our area. The tax revenue will be an asset to the town as well. There is no issue with the receiving home whatsoever. It's the location that we have the problem with. Our street, as well as Paw Avenue, has many families and young children. They ride their bikes up and down Bell Avenue quite frequently. Bell Avenue is also a continuation of the walking path, and there are no sidewalks. Lighting is very minimum. The streets are quite dark at night. Since this receiving home will be, having basically so many families occupying it, we feel that there could be more increased traffic. It's obviously one of our main concerns with the increased use of Second and Bell Avenue. Also a concern with such a large and busy business is the ongoing safety concern. We've had many break-ins in our area within the last year, and we feel with more people coming in from out of town, it could be more like a magnet for further activity. Not necessarily coming from the people that are staying there, like, it would draw further activity to the area. What steps will the town be taking to ensure the safety and security of our neighborhood? More streetlights installed in the back lanes, front streetlights, increased RCMP facilities, or, sorry, presence, security at the receiving home for the sake of their vehicles as well. Another concern that comes to mind is parking and garbage generated from the facility, a concern that several of our neighbors living directly across on the Bell Avenue in Elliott Bay have expressed. In our opinion, the location was not thought through. There are several other areas that could have been used downtown and closer to the hospital and other amenities. It also shocked and infuriated us that our neighborhood was in no way notified. We do feel that we have been duped into this. The meetings were held in camera. The only mention of this in a town council meeting was after the initial press reliefs. There was no advertisement of this hearing made besides a letter that was sent to a very few of our neighborhood households. We didn't receive one. We were only five doors away, apparently just over the hundred-meter diameter. At least a dozen of our neighbors have been in contact with us, and they're feeling the same, especially during the recent election, when a lot of the town council's biggest topics were about transparency. Also, is SCTC aware that this piece of property was previously contaminated? In fact, as early as February 29th of 2016, I have this from the Manitoba Conservation Department's Environmental Management System database, that it is still contaminated property. Also, the lift station at the end of Bell Avenue already cannot keep up with the amount of homes. Is it going to receive an overhaul, or can we expect more backups and flooding? If this piece of land is, in fact, contaminated free, it would have been better suited for quiet seniors housing, in our opinions. It saddens me that with such a shortage of housing, that a seniors, quiet seniors housing was not selected. We have no issue with the SCTC itself or a receiving home itself. It's the location that we're having the problem with. I don't feel that the town council members have a vested interest in our outlook, especially after seeing some recent reactions during the last town council meeting. There was very inappropriate eye-rolling, looks exchanged between members and scoffs. I believe that that behavior was very disrespectful. Our feelings as individuals in a collective neighborhood are valid, and our worries are warranted whether the town council choose to believe they are or not. It seems that the taxpayers of this community, especially in our neighborhood, are not valued. One has to wonder if any of the town council would choose to live beside this as well. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, anybody? Could I just have a clarification? You're not suggesting that because there's a receiving home there, that break-ins would increase?
No.
The safety of the community would be at risk?
It's because that there would be so many more vehicles present in that area, that I feel that it would be more of a break-in to do with the area, not coming from the residents that are staying there. It's to do with the whole, like, it would be more...
More traffic.
Right. With the increased traffic, so our neighborhood would become a larger target, and it's already been a larger target. There was $6,000 worth of damage done to our property in September alone. That was the fourth break-in, the third break-in in one month. And my issue is that that area has become a larger target, not that the problem will be coming from the people that are staying at the receiving home, that there would be more, even more vehicles parked there, is my issue.
More opportunity for break-ins.
Right. Which is why, which is why I was asking if there was going to be security on-site to have their vehicles monitored.
Yeah, which there will be. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Larry Armstrong, 9 Elliott Bay. I have a petition here, over a hundred signatures, against the rezoning of Lot 157 Bell Avenue. I also have a written letter to town and council. This letter is to advise, we are in opposition to rezoning Lot 157 Bell Avenue to permit a receiving home in a single-family residential zone. This is not a debate whether the, or not the town needs this type of facility. We are opposed to the location. There are other locations, the uptown area of the Paw, that would better suit it to meet the needs of the people using and working at this receiving home. The primary reason for the building is for the persons from out of town to have accommodations so they can receive medical care. Locating the building uptown would provide closer access to the hospital and other services such as restaurants, banks, shopping, pharmacy, movie theater, library, and churches. All these amenities are within a couple of blocks and are within walking distance from the hospital. Lot 157 Bell Avenue has none of this. The lot is not close approximately to the hospital. Their area has no infrastructure to meet the increase in people and traffic that comes with the business that operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. The lot is located in a residential area which is not designed to safely to meet the increase in vehicle traffic associated with the building that will be opened 24/7. The streets on Bell Avenue are very narrow. Residents of the area park the vehicles, et cetera, in front of their houses along the streets. Bell Avenue is part of the town walking path. There is a school bus stop located on Bell. Where this business will be situated, children play currently in the area. The increase in traffic on Bell, as well as First and Second Street, will definitely impact the safety of people, children, and pets using the area for their day-to-day activities, as well as EMS and ambulances picking up patients from the receiving home. We encourage the town to continue to pursue a developer to build residential housing on this lot. Fifty-five-plus-type residential building would be ideal for this location, and there's a great need for this type of housing in our town. This would meet the needs of our aging population, who have roots and family in the area and want to live in the Paw, but for personal reasons, no longer to want to own a home and have to cut grass or shovel snow. Okay, just going to leave this to you guys.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. Who would like to speak next?
Oh, did you need the contamination site listed?
We have.
Okay, from the February?
Yep.
Who's next? I saw lots of hands up.
Steve Reimer, Holm Street, 53. You know, it wasn't that many years ago, we wanted to have a dental surgery service provided. It was on where the current MGU building is now. That wasn't, that wasn't rezoned due to the traffic in the area that was going to add. I believe, yes, that this is going to add a lot of traffic into that area of town. It's a residential area. I do have a few other questions other than that concern. Is the lot currently already sold? Or is it pending the zoning?
It's pending zoning.
Okay. That was, I wasn't clear on that. Are we short of hotel space? I mean, I traveled to Winnipeg a lot for medical in the last year. I've stayed in hotels there. It seems to work very well for me. Are we short of hotel space in the Paw? Is that, is that an issue, that we need to build another hotel in a residential area? Because I see that as it is.
I'm not, I'm not sure why you're asking about a hotel.
It's not, are they charging, are they not charging for people to stay there?
Yeah, but it's not a hotel. It's a receiving home. They're very different.
And I get that. And I get that, but it's going to be in a residential area. I see it no different than you putting a hotel there.
Okay.
Totally no difference. You're going to have all that traffic?
Okay.
It's a residential area. I believe it should stay a residential area. If that, if that, if that property can be built on, why don't we open it for people to build homes on in this town?
Okay.
Rather than build another hotel? That's what I'm seeing.
Any comments? Okay, next, Steve.
My name's Ivy Bang. I live at 261 First Street. As listening to their statements, I just had a couple things to say. As far as it not being contaminated, my issue is, once they start digging it up, if it's not decant, decontaminated properly, as there was a hydro diesel plant there, what's going to happen? You know, what's it going to be stirring up in the community and our air quality, which isn't that great as it is? And also, you know, it's a home for the sick, so you're going to build something on a contaminated area and make the sick sicker? Like, that doesn't make sense. It, you know, it makes sense to put somewhere that it's closer to the amenities for the people, within walking distance, easy access. This is kind of off the beaten track a bit. And also, there is a lot of kids in the neighborhood that play on the streets. It's going to make it a more high-traffic area and a high-probability area for one of these kids or their pets to get killed or hit by a vehicle. So there is a safety issue, too, at hand.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Carol Reimer, and I live at 53 Holm Street. I absolutely support having a receiving home. I think it's something that is definitely needed within the community. I do not, however, support where it's currently being looked at being built. I have concerns similar to other people with the traffic increased in the area. We do have an issue with vandalism. Our vehicles have actually been broken into on more than one occasion. And with more traffic and more vehicles in the area, it's just a bigger target for people to come into the area. I believe that this should be built somewhere different, such as, and I don't think this is an option, but just as an example, across the street from Home Hardware, there's that great big lot that's open. It's close to the hospital. People are here for medical needs. It's close to retail stores, banks, et cetera. It seems to be, to me, a more logical place to put something like that. So, again, while I am okay with this being in the community, and I think it is needed in the community, I do have an issue with where you guys are looking at putting this.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Shannon Yaskew. I live at 236 Bell Avenue.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Shannon Yaskew. I live at 236 Bell Avenue. I didn't have a chance to sign the petition there. But I'm not against a receiving home. I believe that the community needs one. But I did purchase, purchased the property knowing it was a resident, potential area, single dwelling, and that's, you know, was important to me at the time, and it still is. I don't want to see other businesses coming into it.
My name's Leanna Newman, and I live at 303 First Street East. Not going to read my whole letter, because there's a lot of points that were already mentioned. And what I really want to clarify is that my husband and I are definitely not in opposition to the building of a receiving home by Swampy Cree Tribal Council in the Town of the Paw, nor by denying the need for a lodging place for the First Nations people as they attend the Paw for their medical needs. And I guess what's been said, too, you know, when you do purchase a home in an area, you definitely look at the neighborhood. You look at the kind of area you're buying into. What are the amenities? Are there parks? Is there schools? Is there apartment buildings? Is there commercial areas? Is there commercial areas? Because, I mean, anytime you look at, say, for instance, apartment buildings, or you look at densities, there's more people for a concentrated area. So naturally, after investing into an area, you will be interested when decisions are made that impact your neighborhood. And I guess that's why we're all here. As a taxpaying citizen of the town of the Paw, I don't agree that 157 Bell is a suitable location. My concerns are with that type of a facility, in the size and in the rooms and the people, like, the amount of people. It will be definitely an impact on the area. And this could be in terms of increased traffic, traffic noise, and it is going to impact the surrounding residents. And it will definitely make it a more densely populated area of town. Safety would be a concern as well because it doesn't appear that the streets and the sidewalks, or lack thereof sidewalks, are equipped for this increase in traffic. Second Street over this winter is at best a one lane due to parking and snowbanks. The 100-block-a-Bell currently doesn't have a sidewalk, and it's for the use of the rotary walking path or children walking to and from school. And as was mentioned, it's a pick-up-and-drop-off for school kids. So if there is to be, I guess my question would be, if there is to be a development of this type, will sidewalks, pedestrian crosswalks, things to make that area safer with that increased traffic, is that going to be a burden for the taxpayers to carry? We all know residential taxes are already crippling many households. It's also a well-known fact that the town sewer and water are in desperate need of an overhaul. Do we know, or has an engineer done a report to find out if water and sewer in that area can handle the increase in usage from a project of this magnitude? And also, too, just because people are from outlying communities, would there not be an area closer to downtown where they can have easier access to shopping facilities, restaurants, and the medical facilities?
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a copy for each of the mayor and council. I see the press is here in full tonight. My name is Terry Hendrickson. I live at 309 First Street, across the street from Doran Park, which is adjacent to 157 Bell. When I came here on February 8th, I spoke for less than 15 minutes. I spoke once an hour, and they changed the laws. You can't talk more than 15 minutes now. But what happened was, I got back and I printed off online a copy of, so I could hear what I said. And then I printed off what the town had recorded to what I said, and it was two different things. It was gibberish what they wrote down and attributed to me. So I went back and I listened to it, and I wrote it down again. So when you go through it, you can see that there's two different things. The other thing is, it seems like I just can't get Town Council to believe that I've been down this road before. I came home from a job in B.C., and I said, "Guess what? Doran Park is going to be a low-rail housing." I said, "In your dreams." I called Town Office, and I talked to a young woman who's denied it. There's nothing. I said, "There's got to be some documentation. If this guy knows, it is going to be dug up." I went home, and my doorbell rang, and I handed a 10-page document that started here in Town Office. It was signed by the C.A.O. It was signed by the mayor. It was approved by council. It was approved by the Dewar Government on September 22, '06. And it had the phone number of the contractor in Swan River who's going to buy Doran Park and the surveyor in Dauphin. So I called him. I said, "What are your plans?" He said, "We're loading up. We'll be there next Monday." I said, "Like hell you are. I won't let you out of your vehicle. There'll be a court action the minute you show up." This gentleman, who is built on the Paw, and he builds nice buildings, the corner of Cathedral and Seventh, he listened to me for 20 minutes. He said, "You know what? I'm not going to go ahead." I said, "I won't build there anymore." I can see there's opposition. And I didn't have a chance to get any other neighbors involved because I was going to be a full-blown file a lawsuit, stop it dead. I didn't have to. So when I spoke here on February 8th, I made mention that this has happened before. That all of a sudden, after six months, it's in the paper that you're going to sell 157 Bell to Swampy Creek. And I want to stop here and say that, I want to thank the two representatives from Swampy Creek. You spoke so well. And believe me, you really need a receiving home in the Paw. There's no one I've spoken to says that they don't need it. There was one across the street that was a receiving home, and it's closed, not because it didn't do well. It was overwhelmed by people that needed a receiving home. Young mothers would come in with kids, but when the young mother is getting treatment, who looks after the kids? It was overwhelming. That is the problem, is that it's going to be such an overwhelming usage facility. So, again, I'm in favor of Swampy Creek building a big receiving home. You really need it. I've worked with every band in northern Manitoba on projects on the Hydro Dams, Thompson, Flintland, and I hire First Nation people. There's a change going on in the Paw. You look at all the development, residential homes around UCN, they're flocking in for education. Education is power, and that's what the First Nation people need, is education, to go back to the reserves. It's become totally independent of the white centers. But medical aid is something that, if there's no big hospitals on these reserves, they got to come here. And there's, my opposition on February 8th was not Swampy Creek, it was just the location. I listed three places. I said, "Look, this land here to the left where Western Grocery was, it's going to become First Nation when they buy Hudsonvale Railway." Beautiful. It's beside, across from the hospital. The kids can go to McDonald's. They can go to what's left at Devon Park. They can walk across the river to the mall. But they live in a residential area. Already a few drives there is single-lane traffic. When you go past Yellow Wet, there's a lot of thirsty people after 5:00 in the Paw, and it's one lane. It's going to get worse. The buses drop off kids there. That's not a good place for a receiving home. I looked at the application tonight, and I said, "What's the reason? Proposal? To build a receiving home in a single-family residential area? Just a single-family residential area." Another place I suggested was, in 2007, Mayor and Council bought $1.8 million, and they built Wood Acres, too. They were going to sell lots for $45,000 bucks. They ended up giving away for $1,000 a piece. Jim, you were part of it. There's still 15 lots sitting there that you could sell to Swampy Creek, but that's not the best location because it would be like building on 157 Bell. The taxis would come and go 24 hours a day. If they build beside here, you wouldn't need taxis. You can walk. So, I put myself in writing. I came here last, on February 8th, and I didn't get any, the press was here, but they never said a word about what had been said. I sat, came here with another taxpayer from First Avenue, and then a lady from Rustic Bay spoke up. They weren't mentioned. Now I see, I got to question, how many names are on that, just roughly?
I think he said about 100, didn't he? Just over 100?
Five pages. There's about 500 people there, you know? So, basically, it's a very sound, to Swampy Creek, you and council have, mayor and council, you got to do some homework and say, "How can we get you a better location? If there's one coming up, let's just hold back." Right now, I did some research. Now upstairs, the Wisconsin Inn is rented by Swampy Creek. Families come in, they have a first-class hotel room, they've got a restaurant, maybe buy the Wisconsin Inn. That's an idea. No evidence, I don't think that would happen. But there's other places in town. There's across the river, you know? I just can't believe, the Paw and Oceano, Pasqueac is an oasis. We're 150 miles from the Swan River, 90 miles from the Swan River, you know? And we've got such a small little population with all this space around us. Why do we have to tear up a park to build a shopping center? Tear up another park to build a, they tried to build a low-rail housing, and I killed it. Now they want, you want to take that land beside the park, residential area, and make it into a structure that, as you've noticed here, people are going to come, as another lady said, people are going to come 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Extended family, you know? When someone is sick, you go and visit them. They'll give you a place to stay. It's going to overwhelm it. It's got to have enough space so it can be expanded, close to the amenities. So I want you to read what I gave you tonight. I mentioned it twice before, and no one seemed to believe that this had happened in 2006. Right now, this motion to dig up Doran Park is still on the books. The contractor, Swan, is still telling me, he's getting phone calls, "When are you going to come and dig up Doran Park?" I want that killed. Write a motion tonight, Mr. Delinsky, say it's gone. Now that you can read firsthand all the steps, all the people that got involved, that's got to come off the books. That park is the oldest park in town. It was a golf course, you know? My friends and I built our homes because we wanted to live across from a park, you know? And I want that to stay a park, you know? Maybe you don't know, but now you know now. It's just, this is a democracy. Jefferson said that when the press is free and people can read, you have a democracy. Well, the people can sure read in the Paw. I want the press to report what it said tonight. I spoke before, and nothing got put down right, or it was put down completely 180 degrees from what I said. So I just want to say to the people of the Paw, we have a problem. We pay the highest taxes in the province in all of Manitoba. It's that year after year it's going on. It'll take a while, yes, Jim, we'll be the highest again. What we need is tax dollars. You look at that, where Grant's Meat Market was. You know, we made a park there that should be sold. It's prime real estate. Let the dentist who's taken over that building buy it to expand, but we just need money to come in because of our taxes. I had three friends who retired, they were going to live in the Paw, and they stole their homes, and they moved south. And I said, "Why?" "We can't afford the taxes. Our house is paid for. Why? And we're on a fixed income. We can all handle so much to spend on food and electricity and taxes. If it doubles, if you get a $500 increase and you're on a fixed income, you know, the month for taxes, that's ludicrous. You've got your work cut out." So I want to thank you for listening to me. It means a lot that I can just come here and tell you and back it up. Any questions?
Just to kind of summarize a few things that I've heard, and you just expounded on it, Terry, and that is taxes, right? The taxes are crazy in town. And I see a lot of people, and we've got a lot of signatures, and that weighs with me when decision time comes here. But the reality is, is that if we don't grow as a community, if we don't get denser in our core and have more people per square meter of town base to generate additional tax revenue, to be able to expand in some kind of socially sustainable way, some kind of economically sustainable way, some kind of physically sustainable way, then we are just beating our heads off a brick wall and expecting a different result every time. Hang on a second, Terry. I'm not, I just want to make sure that we're clear, okay? I've heard everything you've had to say, but I want to make sure that everybody here understands that when we make a decision, we just talked about our financial plan. Three years, we've managed to maintain spending at exactly the same level. We haven't increased your taxes. Assessments have gone up, so on an individual basis, yes, your taxes may have gone up because an assessment went up. Your taxes may have went down because a mill rate has come down. But pound for pound, we're operating the town this year at the exact same cost as we did the year previous, at the exact same cost we did the year previous to that. What that means is, is that we're sacrificing something somewhere. Services are being sacrificed somewhere, and your taxes still are high in general. Whether they're going up or not, we pay the highest taxes in Manitoba. So it is impossible as a community for us to continue to be a sustainable community, and not on a decline, but rather on a pace of growth, without seeing development. Just as a general comment, I understand, I have heard entirely, and I get where you're coming from, that on a residential, single basis, you have an objection to a commercial building, a multiple residential-style building showing up. I presume that if the proposal was to have a 30-unit apartment complex, like is on Campbell Drive, three big apartment complexes or whatever, you would see the exact same turnout because your issues are tied into safety, they're tied into traffic, they're tied into lack of sidewalks, there's questions about infrastructure. I get it. I hear you entirely. So, you know, we don't need to go up back and circle all the way back and say all those things again. But I just, as a general note, want to make sure that everybody understands that we can't talk about, we don't want that anywhere. We're not willing to make any changes, or reason on anything, at the expense of never growing, at the expense of never increasing our tax revenue. The cost continues to go up, even though our budget hasn't in the last three years. Our cost of doing things has, and we've had to sacrifice services to do it. We're not giving out as many grants. We're not handing out funds to social programming, to recreational programming, to the extent that we would like, so that we can maintain our tax, our overall operating costs at the same level. Those are important elements to remember. As we will all remember those things when we're deliberating this decision, we also want to make sure that the public is well aware that that exists as well, right? There is a larger picture.
I'm up to 14 minutes, just one minute here, Mayor. The town has to have bright young people like yourself and your brothers and sisters to put this in writing and let people, myself, know why the taxes are so high. But I just want to close on one thing. I don't think anyone knows that pulp mill complex better than me. I pushed the button in 1971 to start the sawmill. The first paper came off, and it was just brown toilet paper. Toco pays the lowest minimum tax possible. They came here, bought the mill, and they put $30 million on the sawmill. They were producing lumber, and all of a sudden, they realized that they can make it a bit cheaper, and Vernon will shut down completely. So the sawmill shut down. They're producing all the paper they can, at 7% of the market across North America. They've got to pay more taxes. You can't get away from being cheap. When they had a problem and they wanted to shut the sawmill down, the mayor and premier came up, they had a meeting, and they gave them a reduction. It didn't help. They still shut the sawmill down. And then I find out from the CEO, Torquemus, and he said, "You know, we've got more than we even asked for. All we wanted was a minimum recession to help us with taxes, and they gave us more than we even wanted." So we went over backwards. It's so important, these jobs. You try and get across the street at 4:00, it's impossible. In the morning, going out, for those jobs out there, it means a great deal. You've got to talk to Toco and say, "Hey, the free ride is over. You've got to pay your share of taxes." Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak?